Hi there.
Hi.
I forgot to dig out the host code, I'll be right back. I'm gonna log, I'm gonna log out and come back.
Hey Susan.
Good, how are you?
All right.
Did you get your siding done?
It's getting there slowly.
It's getting a little cold now.
Yeah, it's just trying to find time to do it.
Yeah. But the MXU was put back on your house, okay? What did you put that back on?
Um, yeah, that's all put back on, so I did it myself, so, yeah, that was easy enough, so.
And it's connected to the basement to the meter?
Yep, it's wired up.
Awesome. Great.
At least, I, I hope the wires are connected properly, I mean, there's, there's two wires, so I believe I did it right.
Good.
It looks much better, so I cleaned that whole area up, so.
Good.
Hey, good, good evening, everybody.
Hey Jim.
How's it going?
I'm sorry, guys, I'm being all thumbs at the moment, where's the caption button again? There it is. Alright, alright, we are all here.
Is Bill planning on attending, Theo?
No, he, he's traveling, so, so we can, we can call ourselves to order. And, and do, do a roll call and. Alright. So, uh, thank you all for coming to the November fifteenth Planning Board meeting, a little off schedule. So, uh, call to order, Matt Lowery.
Yeah.
Jim Hogan.
Here.
Megan Minasali.
Here.
And myself, Theo Noll, and here, and, um, thank you, Aaron, and thank you, Susan, for, uh, joining the call. So, um, uh, the, we want, I just wanted to have a really quick, uh, Planning Board meeting to update, uh, y'all on, uh, the, the Bylaw Review Committee and their review and edits to our proposed article for the town warrant. And, uh, I think get your feedback and, the, uh, I think, get, get your, um, consent for my recommendation that we, uh, accept a postponement of our article and bring it back, uh, in May. So, the, um, I'm gonna share my screen in a second, um, the, um, we had a really, uh, useful, uh, session with the, the Bylaw Review Committee, they, uh, they took eighty-five minutes to, uh, edit, uh, our bylaw, um, in, um, in, I, I think some simple ways, and, uh, the edits I sent you, uh, that I had copied from that night are pretty consistent with the final edits that, uh, Town Council Tom Mullen, uh, emailed, uh, me this, this evening at about five thirty, which I forwarded to y'all. So, um, there, there are enough edits that, um, I think it makes it a little bit hard to, um, for the Bylaw Review Committee to submit as an amendment to our article, um, in a way that, would be easy for the rest of town meeting to follow, um, hence my recommendation for the, uh, postponement. Yeah, so let me share my screen. Alright, um, so, the, the text in blue is Tom Mullen's edits that I think reflect, uh, the discussion. The, we thought it was enough to make reference to the Mass General Law, Chapter, uh, uh, eighty-five, Sections three, three A and three B, um, uh, but based on the, the committee, they wanted, uh, specific reference to the, uh, appeals rights that are, uh, set forth in Section Three. So that's what he did here, and, and he cleaned up, uh, sort of my wordy language, uh, there. Um, the Bylaw Review Committee and, and Tom Mullen deleted this, uh, last sentence in, in Paragraph A. And, uh, the point was a, a fair one, DPW doesn't have direct regulations about, uh, street names. I think they have more like procedures or, or whatnot, and, um, uh, Tom Mullen convinced them that, uh, it wasn't, wasn't necessary. Uh, in Clause B, um, and I think probably the, the two greatest, uh, concerns of the, the Bylaw Review Committee really was access to appeals process and then, uh, the filing fee. They were afraid that eight hundred dollars wouldn't cover the cost in some cases, um, but also in other cases if, a town department or committee, uh, or any other official body of the town wanted to propose a street name change, that, that fee be, uh, negated, because that would just be a cost of, like, you know, that, that department's budget, and they'd be responsible for it. So the, the point was a minimum filing fee of eight hundred dollars, which is consistent with, uh, sort of our discussion, and then adding in language that says in blue, "to adjust the fee by the town clerk with the anticipated cost of notifications of owners and residents", and, um, I think it was a fair point to add in businesses located on properties affected by the proposed change. And then it, then the sentence, "the filing fees shall not apply to any change proposed by a public body of the town." And then, uh, you know, adding in, uh, subsection, uh, uh, three little I, explain the rationale of the change, made sense, and then again, uh, reference to fee, and, um, uh, I think the, um, when talking about the fee and, and who's affected, I know we struggled with that language around a butter or, or, you know, uh, residents or what have you, so they, um, they were amenable to that, and I, I think, uh, Tom Mullen was able to suggest cleaning it, cleaning up by persons known to own or reside, and all businesses known to be located on properties abutting the way in question. Um, and so I, I think that does it, uh, uh, for us. And then under C, the, they recommended, uh, giving us a little more, uh, lead time to sixty days, uh, to schedule the public hearing. In order to perhaps attract, uh, do more of the notice and, uh, maybe attract more of the affected, uh, known persons and businesses, so, um, so that, that's really what is in, uh, in C. The one thing that was suggested was, uh, to add this language in C about posting notices on multifamily properties, which is something that, that town does do regularly, um, uh, in some occasions, so that, that wasn't a big deal, and I, appreciated that notice, um, and then, um, again, back to questions about the fee, this next sentence, uh, was discussed and, and, uh, Council Mullen cleaned it up, so if the actual cost of notice exceeds the fee previously paid, "the town clerk shall demand payment of the difference in advance before the Planning Board commences any mailing with respect to proposals not made by public bodies of the town." And, uh, and then, um, the last, the last edits, um, are in Paragraph D, um, removing certified mail, return receipt requested, um, just to save a little bit on expenses, um, and again, making the, the, uh, it consistent with all persons residing or owning and all businesses located there. The, the last edit that Tom Mullen recommends not making is adding in some language that the Bylaw Review Committee was thinking, was about, uh, thought would be helpful to have an effective date for the street name change, to be between a hundred and twenty days and, uh, three, no later than three hundred and sixty-five days of the Town Council's approval, and again, they were thinking that that would allow for uh, enough time for the notice and, uh, catch, uh, uh, sort of open the door for any, any potential appeals of street name change. The, we, the, the street name change, um, as Tom Mullen clarified, uh, the appeal to that, um, has to be submitted in writing by twenty-five of the affected people within thirty days of the decision. So, that, um, the recommended, uh, effective date window really didn't, uh, didn't apply, so. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the language?
I guess, my only question is, why did this go to the Bylaw Review Committee after we had already worked on this for a year?
Yeah, um, so there's a bit of a, a mea culpa by the Bylaw Review Committee and an apology that they didn't really get up and running until late in the summer, early fall, so they, they weren't even looking at stuff, and this sort of, uh, they were, uh, in effect, late to the party, so, um, so that, that's, that's really it.
And is, is it their place to review proposed bylaws, not just existing bylaws?
Well, I think, uh, for the same reasons that uh, Dan Lieber came to our public hearing to say, um, it would, uh, kind of make things a little easier on their part, uh, to do it, um, and, uh, us giving, um, you know, them agreeing to all of these changes and us proposing it, um, jointly to the town would, uh, be able to, uh, resolve it with, without any, uh, back and forth, and saves perhaps a little bit of review with the Attorney General and, and so some of the process, so. You know, we're, uh, you know, we're, if, you know, by our delay to May, um, that does, I think, remove, uh, something from their plate and perhaps make things just a little bit cleaner on the back end, um, and, uh, you know, to their credit, they did, uh, uh, commit a fair amount of time to it in their, in their committee meeting, so, um, so, you know, they'll, they'll be glad that they've done, done their, their work, you know, that they would, would have done now or in the future, so. But, um, I certainly do agree with you that it is late in the day and it really does delay our work and, uh, sort of, you know, potentially delay, uh, some of our progress in other areas that, that we want to, to get to. I think, um, you know, I think us having a public hearing, um, uh, next April, uh, um, to put, to put this to bed and then, you know, and then putting it on the, uh, the warrant in May, you know, won't, won't be as big, uh, an imposition or, uh, uh, disruption to our schedule.
So, we are gonna have a public hearing on this now?
I, um, well, we, don't we have, well, again, we have to do what we did, um, uh, earlier, we, we, we do have to have a public, uh,
We just had a public forum.
Public forum there.
There was no, so, I, I'm more concerned if we bring this up again at a public hearing, if we have to do that, and it gets changed again at the last moment, that, um, we're gonna keep pushing this, kicking this down the road and not getting anything established, so.
No, I, I, I certainly appreciate that, too, um, uh, I misspoke, I meant public forum. But, um, but yeah, no, I don't, I don't think we want any more edits beyond these.
Dumb question, is there's no, there's no way to just have all of these edits go in front of town meeting because it's a series of friendly amendments or whatnot, and it's not pre-advertised, is that correct?
Yeah, I, um, so I, I under, I understood two, two different avenues, um, that are related. Uh, we could come to the, to the, to the town meeting with this color-coded, uh, amended draft and hand it out to everyone who's there, and we could propose a wholesale amendment to our proposed, uh, but, you know, our proposed bylaw, um, and ask for people to vote on it, um, I think it might, um, alternatively, uh, we'd still want to come to the meeting with this color-coded copy, but, um, ask that the Bylaw Can Committee be the ones submitting the amendment that we would then accept, and then people can, with the, so.
I mean, at this point, what I'd advocate to do is we continue to proceed as currently constituted in terms of the proposed bylaw committee from the Planning Board. The Bylaw Committee at town meeting proposes these edited changes, was they, as they presented it, because ultimately they, it came from them, and then let the townsfolk accept or not accept, and then get this, you know, theoretically, assuming the town is supportive, get this passed at town meeting, and then, you know, close the loop, I, I think that if we just indefinitely delay it till May, to Matt's point, we've already been working on this for a year and a half, these are, you know, I, I think quality edits, but I don't think that they're like, I don't want to say de minimis, but they're not, they're not like ground, you know, groundbreaking changes, right? And if we can get to the point where we, you know, the town is generally supportive of the idea of this bylaw change, I would think that we should be able to, you know, have a couple amendments done from the Bylaw Committee, because it's, you know, they're the ones who are, you know, requesting these amendments, you know, I think that would be the, to my mind, the, the cleanest way to address this in a way such that it can be done and put in a place, and then we can move on with our lives.
Yeah. I, I appreciate that, um, and, uh, I think, on the one hand, uh, because there's only six items on the warrant, um, that makes life a little bit easier and maybe gives us a window of time to do it. I do think it, uh, it would take time and it could be confusing, and, um, I, I think you run the risk of, uh, bringing something that, uh, seems, uh, I don't know, like, I, um, people might just get annoyed with us that, you know, you know, why, why couldn't, why couldn't you just bring a clean copy to us, um, in May and let us, let us vote on it then, I, I do think there, there is an advantage, um, of uh, postponing and saying, "we got these lit last minute, uh, really positive suggestions, we're going to, bring these back in May, you know, with, you know, uh, full, full support of the Bylaw Review Committee and, uh, and everyone else, so that, um, there wouldn't, there wouldn't need to be any, any discussion, um, so."
Well, the only thing is if this is indefinitely postponed, it's, it's just indefinitely postponed, there's no, as far as I know, there's no comment on why.
Right.
It's just indefinitely postponed.
Well, but, but I'm, I'm looking forward to May when we do, we do bring it back and we say, you know, here's this, uh, this polished, uh, bylaw. Yeah.
Well, as, as frustrated I am with this entire process, um, especially the, the editing after it had already basically gone to town council, um, I am not a proponent of, of making large changes on the floor of town meeting, because at that point, people just shut down, they don't want to read it, they, unfortunately, they don't want to invest any more time in it, so.
Yeah.
And for a lot of people, any change is no good, so they'll, they'll just not vote for it, so. Um, while I, I don't think it's the best solution, I, I think it's probably, uh, the thing that has to be done, unfortunately. Uh, I do wish that if, if it's the Bylaw Reviews Committee to review bylaws before they're, you know, before they're basically brought to town meeting, it, it should be known to people that it's part of the process.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. Jim, Megan?
This part of me, it said we should just recommend it and keep it, keep it, get, get it passed, and if they need amended, let a later date, but I, yes, hear what Matt's saying, probably not worth passing something knowing that you have to immediately revise it, doesn't probably make a ton of sense either, but it's just a frustrating.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
Yeah, I agree with you, Jim, I, I'd rather just put it forward, and if it passes the pass, if it fails, it fails, and then, uh, if the Bylaw Review Committee really wants to redo it, then they can sponsor it at, uh, at the May meeting and explain why it's before everyone again, but, uh, I, I I guess I just don't have enough fight in me for this to really make it, you know, to push that hard.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that, too. Megan, um, do you have any, anything else to add?
No, I mean, I feel the same way, I'm not gonna die on that hill, but it's frustrating and aggravating for people to come in at the last minute, mm. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Agreed, agreed. Alright, well, um, I'm going to, uh, uh, thank you all for, uh, discretion and, uh, and being willing to postpone this. I'm going to, uh, I think, uh, so we will, we will postpone, we'll bring this back up, um, uh, uh, I think we are all gonna, we all can agree to these final changes as proposed by Tom Mullen and, uh, and then just sit on this until, uh, March or April.
Well, I wouldn't go so far, I mean, we, I'm literally just seeing this right now, so, I'm not gonna say that after looking at it for the next six months, I might see something that might need to be changed, so I wouldn't go that far.
Okay.
But if we wanna, if it wants to, you know, withdraw it, that's fine, so, but I'm not gonna agree that this is final right now.
Okay. So, we will review in, in, uh, March. February, March, alright, I can do that, no, I, I appreciate that as well. The, uh, uh, the only other item on our agenda is, uh, any other, uh, items not anticipated, I don't know if anybody else has anything to add in advance of our, our scheduled meeting, uh, next week. I will just throw out, um, the master plan survey, uh, expires on November eighteenth. Um, I'm hoping Aaron can get it extended beyond, uh, town meeting so that we can wave the flag, um, encourage people there to, to fill it out.
Yeah, this is Aaron, sorry, um, we will be extending it, I'm just finalizing the date, but it will be after town meeting and after, uh, the Thanksgiving holiday, so. We'll have a poster at, um, the town meeting with a QR code for people to. Um, we'll have a poster at, um, the town meeting with a QR code for people to put it up on their phone, and then also some hard copies as well.
Awesome. That's, that's terrific. Thank you very much. All right. Um, and, uh, next week we have an A and R and a preliminary subdivision plan that's coming to us, and we're gonna do an update on MBTA communities. So, all right. Thank you all very much. Yeah.
Could I make a suggestion on A and R that it makes sure that it, it is uh, meets all of our standards before it's brought before us? Because um, I, I'm, I'm a really a proponent for unless the plan complies, we shouldn't even be discussing it because it's not it's not our job to review. It's to, uh, to endorse and a, a plan that meets our, meets our rules and regulations.
Yeah. Uh, we'll do. That is, um, a good recommendation and a good standard to hold everybody to, for sure. All right. Uh, with, uh, with nothing else to discuss, um, thank you all for, uh, jumping on this call and for considering, uh, this postponement. And, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you. Um, any second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Matt, Jim. Um, all right, all in favor, um, Matt Lowery?
Yes.
Jim Hogan?
Yes.
All right, Megan Minasali?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, um, thank you, everybody, and, um, see you on Saturday and, uh, in person, which will be nice, and see you, um, in the planning board meeting, uh, next Tuesday night.
Thanks, Theo. Have a great night.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Night.
And this doesn't count as the shortest meeting, by the way, because it was, uh, the crash ones. Matt, you still have the record.
All right.
All right, bye, everybody.